Each month, we like to start with a portion of our vision, mission, and belief statements. We believe in instruction that is student-centered, effective, creative, engaging, and that teaches more than academic content. And assessments that are authentic, meaningful, appropriate, and helpful in guiding students' futures in whatever location they choose. In technology that enhances learning, enables education in varying environments, and prepares students for current and future technological advancements. In facilities that should provide a safe, clean, and effective learning environment. And improper stewardship of resources that supports the sustainability, security, and effectiveness of our school district. So, we will move to the Students of the Month.
Alright, I would like to call up Mrs. Marley Byer. Come on up, Marley. Ready? Just give something else, okay? She's a ball of fun. So, Marley is the daughter of Garrett and Paige Byer, both proud parents over there. She is in Mrs., or was in Mrs. Dayhoff's kindergarten classroom. She has one little sister, Zoe. How old is Zoe? Three years old. You guys get along pretty well? Kinda like her? Alright, that's good. That's good. I asked her what her favorite subject in school was. Do you remember what you told me?
Art.
Art, yes, art. Very good. I asked her what her favorite hobby was, because I had to explain to her what a hobby was, and you can do anything you want to do when somebody's not telling you what to do. And she says she just likes to color. Likes to color, and more importantly, likes to color animals, right? That's right. And her favorite food, you'll never guess it. Do you remember what you told me your favorite food was?
Broccoli.
Broccoli. I like broccoli too. We're good, that's good. I asked her what her favorite color was. Orange, there you go. And then I asked her what her favorite show to watch was, and I didn't know what this was. Do you remember what you told me? Yeah, A for Adley, right? A for Adley, and I had to look that up. It's kind of a neat little show where they kinda go over like, more of an educational type of thing for little kids, I think. So, it's pretty cool. I asked her what she liked best about Bloomfield, and she said, "I get to learn." That's a great, that's a great answer, absolutely. Wanna hear what Ms. Dayhoff had to say about you? Alright, Mrs. Dayhoff says, "Marley is a wonderful student. With her enthusiasm for learning, helpful nature, and ambition, she fills her kindergarten classroom with joy and kindness every day. Marley's cheerful spirit and determination make her a wonderful example of an ideal student for her fellow Cardinals. We are so proud of her and proud to celebrate with her in the impact that she has made on our Bloomfield Elementary family." Good job, kid. I got two things for you. This is a plaque you can put on your wall. Have Dad hang that up tonight, okay? Alright, and Blizzard from Dairy Queen. You like ice cream, right? Alright, there you go, Blizzard from Dairy Queen. Marley Byer, everybody.
Alright, for the middle school and high school, we had juniors and eighth graders for our Students of the Month. And so, for our first Student of the Month, I'm gonna recognize our junior, Mr. Ethan Davis. Come on up here, Ethan. You're doing the night. Congratulations, man. Alright, Ethan, as I mentioned, is a junior here at Bloomfield. His favorite food, he listed a steak. He's a steak guy. Anything else?
Potato.
It's a good combination right there. Ethan is involved with the baseball team. Tough loss in the section. Took a Clay City, I think, the first game, and then Shaq back the last one. Had a good year though, successful run. He's a member of FCA, Christian Service Club, BPA, Beta, and Student Council. His hobbies and likes, he likes to go fishing, play baseball and basketball, and go to sporting events. So, if you go to sporting events, what do you like to go to?
Football games, basketball games, whatever. Whatever I can go to.
Where you can go to, alright? Favorite pro football team?
Colts.
Okay, I mean, it's a standard, that's a good one. Nothing like the Packers, but still. Alright, favorite subject?
Math.
Math, because you're good at it, right? You are good at it. And it does come easy to him, so, without a doubt on that. And then Ethan says what he likes most about Bloomfield. And is a, when he graduates, he'll be able to graduate with an associate's degree from Ivy Tech College. So, Ethan, congratulations to you, my man, for a job well done. Good solid junior year, looking forward to your senior year. Congratulations on Student of the Month.
I don't have a blizzard?
I don't have a blizzard. Though he will be getting sucked in when we get done here, he'll get it. So, we're free, not just eight pizzas, but three pizzas there. From our own Mill Street. Not just because it's Thursday. Yeah, yeah, I'm thinking about Tuesday, it's Thursday night. Hey, our next Student of the Month is seventh grade Michelle Young. Michelle, can you come up here, please? Now, before, when I looked at this, Michelle had not answered, so I asked her, could I ask her questions? And she said yes. But she went ahead and answered them, so it was a done deal. So, her favorite food, now you wrote, "I don't know," so do you have one that you think of?
I don't know, actually.
Okay, so just wide, wide open, right? It's whatever's, whatever's that type, okay? She's not involved with any programs right now, however, she enjoys art, and she would like to join the art club. And so, her favorite subject is art, right? Now, I like this, because I get a lot of money for it, right? You, you people, you get, you wanna sell some, sell some pieces there, right, at some point? Alright, well done, good. And she says, "I like, what I like about Bloomfield Middle School is there are a lot of choices to go to." Alright, Michelle, congratulations to you on being the Student of the Month for eighth grade and this year. Thank you very much.
So, next we have is public comments, and we have... Oh. Sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Wriggleman, it's your turn. Principal's report side.
Recognition?
Yes.
Do I give them a chance to leave now, or do we wait till...? Okay, so I guess... Listen, this is my first time doing this. This is Darren's fault, he's not here to wait. So, the Students of the Month, you guys are welcome to stay and their families. But if you wanna leave, you can go ahead and leave, we'll give you guys a few minutes. Okay, so now we'll move on to the principals' reports.
Alright, so just a few recognitions that I have here. I would like to thank both Terry and Kayla for helping out with our track and field day, really, I know that was much appreciated. They were taking those hot dog stuff in those buns and handing them out to kids, and they were really busy. And it got hot back there, didn't it? It hadn't been hot at all until that day, and so, they were sweating like crazy up out there, and I appreciate their help. As well as Mrs. Hill, or Ms. Hill, I should say, and Mr. Whitmer, they organized that entire event. And they even kinda took our Character Bash end of year thing that we do, and they blended it with the track and field. And I'll be honest with you, I told them they could do it, but I was doing that under protest, and I did not think that would go well. And I was wrong, it went perfectly. So, I think Ms. Hill made me tell her that like three times. I gave her a hard time, so I mean, I don't blame her, but I do appreciate that. And speaking of the Character Bash, I mean, every year that we've done this, the community just goes above and beyond. And I've gotta recognize our community, because, I mean, we just get so many just donations, whether it be they bring in items, or they just wanna give us some money to help out and buy the items. I know the kids love it, and we're basically rewarding them for doing great things. And just, and I remind them of that when we do, when it's going through, and we're doing the intro to the Character Bash. I want them to remember one more time, this is why we do this, not just give away toys, but it's to support you in doing the right thing, creating good citizens. And so, I know they appreciate it, teachers appreciate it, and everything went well there in that end of the, end of the year events that we had. Also, we did finish our second round of I-Read testing. We had eighty-eight percent pass rate, which is well above state average, so we're always proud of that. And the spot where we sit most of the time, we had a few more special ed students passing than we normally do, which I thought was great. A few of them just missed it, you know, we were hoping we could get a few more, but that's where we ended up for now. I-Read testing is complete, we're starting, well, we got several scores back, we still have some, last time we got a chance to talk to Ms. Hill, that had not been reported yet, but overall, we're sitting at or above state average. And we had a few of them, especially in mathematics, that we were, we were well above, and I was pretty impressed with that. So, that was, that was a good thing there. I always go over the Library of Citizenship Award winners, and Mrs. Patterson runs this, it's called the Super Library Patrons Program. Basically, she's rewarding kids for following rules, turning the books in on time, and taking care of their books, that's important. And so, our winners, over the, since the last time we had a meeting, was Delaney Thompson, Taylor Nycom, Ally Gerald, Ella Dayhoff, Hayden Heston, Will Campbell, Briann Manning, Max Zitterman, Cora Felton, Amelia Graves, Max Peg, and Adley Price. And so, again, that was something that Ms. Patterson started on her own, she asked for permission to do it, and she handled it. And I do appreciate all her efforts there. And right now, that is all I've got for that, so I know there's a lot, end of the year's always a whirlwind, those are the things that stood out.
Thank you. Mr. Dean?
Yeah, so, recognition for the middle school, high school. First off, very beginning of the month, we completed our I-LON testing with that, so, that first week of May, it went very well. We held our VIP breakfast on Tuesday, May 7th, and recognized our student VIPs. And Mr. Dan Luce was our guest speaker. Talked about his experiences at Bloomfield, and we'll go on after that. Part to that, we had, we sponsored, hosted the Rogary Scholarship in Top Ten banquet on the 8th, 30th of April. And so, that was attended by the top ten students from grades nine through twelve, and also the Senior Scholarship Award winner, Stu Rogary, on that day. We hosted our high school and middle school awards day on Friday, May 10th. On the high school, both of those are classroom awards, but with the high school, we recognized our senior scholarship winners. This year, our seniors earned a combined four hundred and ten thousand, almost four hundred and eleven thousand dollars in scholarship, going on to secondary institution. And so forth, and there was all forty thousand dollar bonus tech given to Olivia Well, it's the excitement of the Navy. So, that was a big day, it's always a fun day. We also recognized our food group, earned the Indiana College Corps. We had fifteen students earn the Indiana College Corps this year, who have taken lock-up thirty credits through our early college program. And we had three students earn the Associate in General Studies throughout the tech, as well, through seniors there. Middle school awards were the end of afternoon, and again, we recognized our classroom awards for the middle school. Green County, we had our seniors participating in Green County Senior Day, which was on May 15th. And that was held at the fairgrounds, and it was, it was part career fair, part employability skills and life skills, parenting one-on-one, not parenting, but adulting one-on-one, was part of this title. And so, we had, had a good turnout for our seniors that day, and this was participated by Eastern Green, by Linton, by the Derby, by Shaq. So, did a good job with that. Outside of that week, they had their senior trip, went down to Hollywood. Just outside here in the hallway, if you've not noticed it yet, you need to, when you go by, it's on the side of the gym here. The combined art project that Mr. LeBrand, with the Sculpture Trails out of Salisbury, over combined six hundred hours, man-hours, that were involved in that, the students, putting that together. And it's a pretty cool compilation there. And so, that's something that all our students, K through twelve, participated in. And I wanna recognize Mr. LeBrand for being that organizer, seeing that started and going. And then the help of the Sculpture Trails from Salisbury, they were, of course, they came down, brought the forge and worked outside the, out there, doing that. Wanna recognize, where we have one in attendance here, Mr. Chase Wilds. Chase has been selected to play in the IHSA CDA, that's Indiana High School Baseball Coaches Association, future team at Huntington University. As for the top six, the underclassmen, so congratulations to Chase on being that, I believe he was a pitcher, correct? Yeah, alright, let's let him down then. So, and then also, we have Nolan Hughes, who has qualified for the state track meet this Saturday. That will be at Indiana University, and he will be competing in the field at this. So, congratulations to Nolan on that. And finally, this past Saturday, we graduated our seniors, and it went very well. And we're well attended, the green weather, and we always try to do an under sixty. Did a good job. So, I wanna congratulate them on making them to move on.
Thanks, thank you. So now, we'll move to the public comments section. I'll just, we have three signed up to speak, two, but we have three topics. And I'll just start off by saying that each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three-minute duration, the public comment section may not exceed thirty minutes total. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic, and all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer, no person may address or question board members individually. So, the first person we have is Amber Brainstetter, and she has two different topics to speak on, so you can just...
I'll jump ahead, though, because the wellness plan, I'm gonna reserve my public comment, because I have no idea what it is, and I researched, and I can't find anything on that, so I'd like to reserve my public comment, because I might have something to say about it. So, my other comment is, I've also researched what the collective bargaining agreement, done some other research, and I'm finding nothing that addresses how we handle teachers and school employees with regards to EPA positions. The collective bargaining agreement has percentages, kind of, or salaries, I'm assuming. I didn't kinda glance through that, but there's no way in how we handle whether they're hired, fired, brought back, whatever. So, I'm requesting that the board either provide me the information to the policy with regards to how we handle that respectfully and professionally, or that we come up with some policy in how we handle that respectfully and professionally, because I think we all know that, at least my opinion and a lot of others, is that some of the issues that happened the last time were not handled in that manner. And I think the teachers and the community deserve to have that kind of policy in place at the school so we can retain our employees. And that's all I have.
Thank you. So, you're gonna reserve the wellness?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so then our next is Ian Corbin.
Hello, I'm sure you all know me. My name's Ian Corbin. I will be going into my senior year next year, one more year. I'd like to start off, back in January, whenever I heard the news that really happened, transferring to a different job, which I well respect, and she decided to move on, I'm not bashing her for that. But whenever I heard that they had a potential person hired, her, Blaze Kirkley, I was told by many different reliable sources that she would be dual-credit certified. And I had several meetings with the school counselor, and she said, she's one of the ones that was saying that it'll be alright, she'll be dual-credit certified. I believe it was Tuesday, May 21st, second block of school, I went back to talk with her just about some things, and I found out that Blaze Kirkley is not in fact dual-credit certified, and she is only, for calculus at least. She has not had enough years of experience to earn this certification, and so she will just be paid, reaching AP calculus. And you can earn a college credit through an AP class, but you have to pass the test. And from my understanding, not many people pass the AP calculus test here at Bloomfield. Or, and, anywhere, really. I believe that if the school loses someone or moves that person, I believe they should be well-equipped to replace that person in all of their abilities they have. And that is something that is not happening here. And so, like, I'm not too worried about the dual-credit versus AP difference. But there, as, as you can see, I'm wearing an engineering shirt currently. I'm wanting to go into engineering, after this is a very major part of that. And there are still, there still can be differences between the curriculum, between an AP class and college class, since they probably will be more run by the teacher, and the college class will be more ran by the college through it, through. And all of this, that's all about the dual-credit class. And then, not to mention that whenever Bea Frank left this school, back in my eighth grade year, I took her into the engineering class, and she also taught physics and a lot of the engineering topics. And like, whenever she quit, I didn't really pay attention much back then, since I was only going into freshman year. But from what I remember, I do not, like, remember seeing an attempt to replace her. Because of this, I am currently going to be going to Lincoln to take physics for next year. So, I will be driving over there, and then driving back with my own car, my own gas. And I, I don't, I haven't asked if, who would provide transportation, but I also have not been offered that. I believe that is something that, if we're having to send kids to another school to take classes, if it's something that we can't find a teacher for, that's one thing, but I have not seen an attempt to find a teacher to replace these things. And then, I'd likely, or I'd lastly like to say something about the past few meetings, so, if you have noticed, I have been coming to these meetings since past December, I have made five out of six meetings. And I've learned quite a lot from them. But the more I have been here, the more I start to realize that our community, our school, and you guys, which it might not be your fault, I think it's just the way society is becoming, but athletics are starting to become a higher priority than academics. And I think that's something we all, as a community, and like, everyone need to look at, and make sure, a school is a place for academics, not necessarily just for athletics. And that is all I would like to say.
Thank you, Ian. Okay, so, our routine business, we received our minutes from the April 18th board meeting. So, do I have a motion for approval? All second?
All second.
All in favor? We have our meeting minutes from the May 14th executive session, do I have a motion for approval?
I make the motion to approve.
All second? All in favor? We received the treasurer's report, do I have a motion for approval?
I make a motion to approve it.
Do I have a second?
All second.
All in favor? And then, we have our personnel report as well. Do I have a motion for approval on it?
I make the motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
All second.
All in favor? And then, did you want to address?
Mr. Wriggleman, can you introduce?
Sure, sure, this is Maddie Jordan. Maddie is going to be our fifth grade mathematics teacher. She's gonna have the pleasure of working with Mr. Raper and Mr. Graves, which I think will be pretty cool. I mean, she's got a pretty good team there, and Mr. Raper brings a lot of knowledge and experience. Mr. Graves brings a lot of enthusiasm and thinking outside the box, and so, two pretty good people. Interestingly enough, I only have four male teachers in my building, counting Mr. Whitmer in PE, and she's gotta be with two of them. This is her mom, Allison, and this is her sister Beth, and they're here to support her, and I'm sure she appreciates that as well. I told her, we'll get her up to you next week, and give her a tour and all that kinda stuff, and get her all set up. So, I will say that she is an IU grad, so, go Hoosier, there we go, right there, bachelor's degree in elementary education. She has a wonderful personality, and she kinda won us over with that right there. So, and I'll be honest with you, I checked all her references, and I mean, just glowing, glowing references. They were signed for her, they bragged on her, everything that we felt we were getting, I think that we sold her a little short, based off what I was told by the references when I checked them. So, Maddie Jordan, everybody, and I think she's been a great thing.
Welcome, welcome.
And I also wanted to take a moment to thank Mr. Wriggleman for the past five years. Part of this personnel report is his resignation as he's moving to become the middle high school principal, Linton. But I wanted to say thank you for the past five years, we really appreciate your dedication, your work ethic, and your willingness to invest in our students, but also our staff and our community. And just as a testament to those three things that you've done, as of right now, there's zero openings in the elementary, which is setting the next principal up for success and setting our students up for success. So, I just wanna thank you for all your work and continuing to work, you know, even now, to make sure you set us up for success, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wriggleman.
So, the next item is donations, and I will just read off who has made donations to the school. So, we have, for the Riley Dance Marathon, we've got the Feed Store, and then Shelter Insurance, Jason Edwards, Anonymous to Beta, Farm Bureau, and Peabody Coal Company to FFA Mills of Hope. We've got the American Legion Post 196, Donald Dorsett, Ryan Van Divender, VFW Post 9297 Auxiliary, and Chamber of Commerce to ROTC. We've got Havig and Cochrane to the middle school, Happy Mats to Athletics, another anonymous, the Yearbook, Senior Color Pictures, and then Chamber of Commerce and Hill Pet Care to the high school beta. And then we have some fundraiser requests, we have some requests, oh wait, I guess we need to prove that, don't we, the donations? So, I guess...
I make the motion to approve.
Alright, you got a second?
All second.
All in favor? We'll get through this, guys, I'm not doing terrible. Fundraiser requests, we have from Bloomfield Band, Green County Community Band, Volleyball Aversity Program, and Volleyball High School Girls, High School Volleyball, there's several for volleyball, High School Cheer, and Junior High Soccer. So, do I have a motion to approve the fundraiser requests?
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
All second.
All in favor? Other business, we had previously on the agenda the proposed student handbook, but we removed that, and we will be going over that at the June meeting. So, and then the next item under other business, we have the FFA Overnight Field Trip. They're requesting an overnight field trip to West Lafayette, Indiana, June 18th through the 20th, for the FFA State Convention. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
All second.
All in favor? All in favor? And then we have the NJROTC overnight field trip request for the Leadership Training Camp at Camp Atterbury, that's June 21st to the 28th. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
And do I have a second?
All second.
All in favor? And then Dr. Vanderey, would you like to go over item D, which is the policy 8510 for wellness?
Yes. So if you look at that policy, one of the things it says is the superintendent shall report annually to the board on the work of the wellness committee. It also states that the superintendent shall be responsible for informing the public, like we're doing right now, including parents, students, and community members, on the content and implementation of the policy. So I want to follow through what, what that board policy says. So I do want to bring up that the wellness committee consists of myself, Mr. Riggelman as the elementary principal, Mr. Dean as middle high school principal, both Mr. Caleb Dunkerly and Mr. Alex Whitmer as physical education teachers, Mrs. Renee McIntosh as our school nurse, and Ms. Sarah Helms as our food service director. So there's several things that we had meeting August 7th. We did updates at the end of August, we did updates in October. And then in April, I was asking for review of the year. So my, I'm going to give you my questions and give you their answers. So I asked Mr. Dunkerly and Mr. Whitmer if, if they believe that we have integrated nutrition education that has been comprehensive in the health curriculum and that has been age appropriate. Mr. Dunkerly said when he teaches health, and when it's available, or when he teaches health, nutrition education is incorporated within the Indiana academic standards for high school curriculum. Also during his weightlifting class, he goes above and beyond to incorporate healthy eating habits for all students so they can gain maximum weight muscle tone. Mr. Whitmer mentioned that he works with each class and grade level every year on the importance of nutrition, how it impacts how they feel and perform. They also discuss and talk about why so many professional athletes pour tons of money into nutrition. A question that I asked Ms. Helms as our food service director is if she believes that the nutrition education has extended beyond the classroom by engaging and involving the school's food service staff. And if she has seen nutrition education posters, for example, with the Food Pyramid Guide or MyPlate. And Ms. Helms said the cafe staff have opportunities for summer workshops, and there's at least one food show in the summer as well. And the cafe has food guide posters already, including MyPlate. Another question I asked Mr. Dunkerly and Mr. Whitmer is if they believe our physical education program is being comprehensive and in accordance with state standards and has benchmarks. And if our instruction has promoted participation in physical activity outside of the regular school day. Mr. Dunkerly mentioned that, that the physical education program is in accordance with the Indiana Department of Education standards and benchmarks, and that both he and Mr. Whitmer daily promote physical activities throughout the school day and after school hours. Their encouragement to students is to be active for 30 to 60 minutes daily. Mr. Whitmer mentioned that his program is also based off Indiana standards and benchmarks, and they do multiple activities and exercise that any student can easily apply in a home setting. He also talks with each class about the importance of physical activity each day and how it affects the health of mind and body. I asked Mr. Riggelman as the elementary principal, if all students in kindergarten through fifth grade have been provided with a daily recess period of at least 30 minutes in duration. And he said that all of them have 30 minutes of recess each day. I asked Mr. Whitmer, Mr. Dunkerly, if the school has encouraged family and community organizations to help develop and institute supportive physical activity of all sorts. Mr. Dunkerly's response was that Bloomfield promotes physical activities for families and community organizations each school year, from literacy nights with a 5K run walk to community run clubs and multiple extracurricular activities, sports being offered to all students. Bloomfield schools also promotes, promotes physical activity to better everyone's health and well built being. Mr. Whitmer agreed that the school has done various events to support physical activity. I asked both Mr. Riggelman and Mr. Dean if the school has provided at least 30 minutes every day for students to eat, and if they believe our cafeteria has been a clean and inviting place for students to eat. And if all school meetings or club meetings that have taken place during lunchtime allow students to eat during that time. Mr. Dean said yes, all students get 30 minutes lunch, and the cafeteria has been clean and inviting, and students eat during their meetings. Mr. Riggelman reported that students in all elementary grades are given a 30 minute lunch duration. The elementary does not usually have club meetings during lunch hour. If a teacher did decide to have some students in their classroom during lunchtime, they would most certainly be allowed to eat lunch during that time. I asked Ms. Helms if she believes or has any insight on if our school has encouraged students to increase their consumption of healthful foods during the school day, have a variety of fresh prude produce been included that are prepared without added fats, sugars, refined sugars, and sodium? And has the food service program been financially self-supporting? Has continued education been offered to the food service staff? Ms. Helms reported that as students come through the serving line, they encourage the students to at least try any food they refuse to get. The cafe has actually introduced more of the fresh foods, fruits this time of year. All types of melons are a big hit. The cafe is financially doing awesome. The cafe staff always has training or further education opportunities. I asked both principals, have all food and beverages that have been available for sale to students for consumption on campus between midnight and 30 minutes after the end of the school day complied with the USDA dietary guidelines? Mr. Dean said yes, they all have and meet all USDA requirements. And Mr. Riggelman said that he believes that Ms. Helms and her staff, along with our staff and monitor the cafeteria, have done a great job creating a clean and inviting environment in our cafe. The elementary does not typically have food for sale during this time period. However, if we were to choose to do so, we would follow the USDA dietary guidelines. And I thanked Mrs. McIntosh for being a part of the committee and attending all the meetings, but had no questions for her because she does an awesome job. And there weren't any on the policy.
I will say that the day that Kayla and I humped with the, with the field day, the kids that, I think they may have chose not to get the hot dog, or maybe they did choose to get the hot, I don't know. But they, those plates, I, I remember, I used to work in food service years ago, whenever my girls were real little. And the biggest complaint that we always heard from people was that they just didn't get enough food. They come home from school starving. And these kids' plates, they, it was fantastic. Like the amount of variety of food, a different fruit, different vegetable. There was something fun on there. Like there was just all the things. I was like, wow, like it's, you guys are really doing a great job. Yeah, and that day was huge because of you guys. I mean, just, he made it sound like we were busting our butts, but we were not.
We appreciated it, yeah, we liked helping, but they just. I have another question about this. So I was invited to be on this committee a few years ago. And do we have, so with the wellness, has Kim Hill ever been considered to be on this committee? Or anybody else with as far as the mental wellness as well? Is that something that could be considered?
It definitely can. This, our committee did meet all the requirements in there, but, because this was more focused on nutrition and physical health. But, you know, like a couple of the answers were, Mr. Whitmer, Mr. Dunkerly was, you know, especially Mr. Whitmer was talking about how proper nutrition and proper physical activity does help your mind and your mental health. But.
I just remember sitting in some of those, I mean, it's been several years ago. So I didn't know if, if it varied year by year, how.
No, it's, if, on this policy, it's all focused on nutrition and physical activity.
Thank you. So then we have, next is the superintendent's report.
Well, I had three things. I had a question for Mr. Dean. You mentioned Nolan Hughes. Is it right, did he break the Swiak discus record? I thought he did.
The Swiak was a discus shot, I think it was a shot, but record day broke.
Well, it was 155 feet, wasn't it? That was something impressive as well, when you think of the history of the conference and all the schools. So I'm sorry to put you on the spot there. Well, then I'll give you a compliment, because the other, another thing I was going to bring up is something as we close out the end of the year, and as you mentioned, the students who had gotten, you know, the associate's degree and all those dual credits. I, I do think, you know, it is a, definitely a leadership initiative with you working with teachers to get that credentials and a lot of effort by the teachers to make sure that they, they can offer those classes. And so I, I do appreciate all the work that goes into getting all those dual credits and saving students money in the future and, and kickstarting their college. I did have one other comment. We will be, and this is for the public, we'll be posting for a special session on Monday at 6:20 PM right here. And at that special meeting, our plan is to, or my plan is to recommend our next elementary principal, our next athletic director, our next basketball coach, and also our next instructional coach. So that is the plan. And I just wanted to publicly state it so that people know what's coming. We were doing a lot of interviews and going through reference checks, and I did not want to try and push it to try and get everything done for this meeting and it be a last minute. So I wanted to make sure we do our due diligence, take the time, get the best candidates we can for each of those positions. So Monday, 6:20, all that will be on the agenda is public comment and a personnel vote. So it'll take as long as the public comment and the personnel vote. And then after that, we'll go into a work session where we're going to start a process for our next bond. Very long process, Monday's just the start. Thank you.
Alright. Do we have any board member comments and items for future business? Right, so, so there are future meeting, like you said, will be, when is it? Monday, June 3rd, thank you. June 3rd, 6:20 PM. And this meeting is adjourned.